All right, so we're gonna start if we want, we could just make introductions, do some simple introductions. And the iPhone is Jonathan from the Latino Counseling Center. So I don't know if Focus Springfield wants to change that, or if you want me to change it. Oh, Jonathan did it. Also, then we have another iPhone. Who might?
That's me, Zeta.
Christine?
Cindy.
Cindy, oh, okay, that's Cindy Clemens. Okay. So that's Cindy Clemens. I don't know if, um, um, Focus Springfield wants to change it, or if I can change it, I'm not sure if I can. No, I can't change it. So that's Cindy Clemens, um, focus. I think that might be Susan. All right, so we'll just, um, we'll start. That's okay, because of course you all know how important our time is. So I'll start with you, Rep. Puplo's Representative, Sherry. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sherry Spinks, and I've worked with Representative Puplo for just over twelve and a half years now. And, um, and I'm glad to be here. I work in the district office usually, so. Um, so I get to meet with the constituents more and things like that and talk to them. So this, this is going to inform me as well as him, so I'm looking forward to this.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Mr. Kraft?
Hi, everyone, I'm Ben Kraft. I'm the Vice President of Community Engagement for the Center for Human Development, also known as CHD. And, um, obviously, we have a big presence in, uh, Hampton County and Springfield. And so I apologize for being late to the party, but, um, I'm here to represent us and see how, you know, we can help. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, and I'm so glad you're here, um, Ben. And Tiffany?
Good evening, hi, everybody. My name is Tiffany Rufino. I am the Youth Mental Health Coalition Manager, which is convened by the Public Health Institute of Western Mass. And I'm just really excited to be here and be a part of the conversation. Thanks, Zeta.
Thank you, thank you for having, for being here, rather. And Beverly, did you want to introduce yourself, or do you want me to tell them?
No, hi, no taker. Glad to be here.
Most important person here today. Um, Nicole?
Hi, everybody, I'm Nicole DeLara, a family and community health worker, but I really come to the table to bring, um, family and personal experience.
Yes, thank you so much. Jonathan?
Good afternoon, Jonathan from Latino Counseling Center.
Thank you. Ayana? Ayana, we can't hear you if you're speaking. That's Ayana Crawford. She's actually from Representative Orlando Ramos's office. She's her, um, his chief, chief of staff. I hope she can, um, be able to talk. All right, and Cindy?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm Cynthia Clemens from St. Harbor Adult Senior Services. My primary focus of practice is education for those with Alzheimer's, dementia, and other behavioral issues.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we'll just get right into this meeting. And I, first of all, I want to thank the legislators who are here. I'm hoping there'll be, um, more that will join us later on. We really want the senators, um, and the other reps as well to, um, join us. But the reason, and I'll give you a little bit of background, Sherry, um, Ayana, she's been at the table for a while. But, um, basically, what we've been doing is, um, in January of this year, when I became, um, a city counselor, I was very concerned about mental health, of course, as being a social worker. And we had a really, um, a bad tragedy happen, um, where a person who was looking for or needed, um, mental health services was in a crisis and sadly, um, tragically lost, um, their lives. Orlando Taylor. Because of that, this committee was formed at the city council, um, to address crises in the city of Springfield. We know that, you know, crises happen all the time, and the response that we need to have has to be, um, you know, appropriate for our city. I think that we do a great job with what we have, and we've heard from other agencies and other people, um, that, um, do that kind of work. So, um, we've been meeting to come up with a plan to address these issues, right? We actually had some, um, social work awareness workshops in March. We've had some mental health checkup days. We talked about mental health checkup days. And Kathy, um, from BHN actually has some information. We've been doing some, uh, research as to, oh, Jennifer's here. Hi, Jennifer. As to, um, what we can do in response, um, and help the agencies address this problem, right? Because I don't think any one person can do it by themselves. No one agency can do it. So I'm really excited to have CHD here. I'm excited to have, you know, uh, the Latino Counseling Center here, um, because we all need to work together. And that's what our plan is. So the reason we wanted our state legislators here was to see what kind of support we could get from the state level and see what it is that we might need to do to maybe activate some support at the state level. I know that in Connecticut, I heard a story, it was, I think, three or four months ago, but they had, I think, fifty billion dollars in surplus. And they've decided to take thirty billion of that, or it could be a million, I'm not sure. But they decided to take a large portion of that money and invest it in mental health, specifically youth mental health, which I'm really excited that, uh, Tiffany is here with the Youth Mental Health Coalition, because that's where, I think, you know, our, our focus, um, should be focused on. Because, of course, they're gonna be adults, um, later on, and as Nicole knows, um, you know, we, we carry this with us everywhere we go. Mental health is a, a community problem, and it's a, a really broad problem that a lot of people have. So that's the reason we wanted our state reps here and our legislatures. Um, and I want to give you an opportunity to maybe share what you guys are aware of, what you think we might be doing, or we should do differently, or we could be doing differently. So go ahead. And first of all, I'm gonna have Jen introduce herself from Senator Lester's office.
Thank you, Zeta. I'm happy to be here. I'm Jennifer Match. I'm the District Director for Senator Eric Besser. Soon, we have a brand-new employee on his fourth day of employment with us. He is the District Legislative Aid. Stefan Chech is coming on soon. Oh, there he is. I, I will say that we have, um, there is a mental health bill that was passed August one, and I'm, I hope, it's a hundred and fourteen pages. I don't think everybody's read it entirely. I'm sorry, I don't have a summary for you today, but there's a lot of very good, um, opportunity in there for the connection for community, uh, to access, which is great.
Excellent. Stefan, you want to introduce yourself? And then I'm gonna let Maria from the Latino Counseling Center introduce you. Thank you, Dan, for being here.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, my name's Stefan Chech. Like Jen said, I'm the District Legislative Aid as of this past Monday for Senator Besser's office. So, um, obviously, this is my first meeting with Springfield City Council, and, um, I, I did have a chance to look at your, the agenda sent earlier today. I have, actually have it up right now on my computer. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, uh, good things come out of this meeting and how we can help on the state side.
All right, great, thank you so much. And Maria? You're muted, Mama.
You have myself, hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Maria Silva. I'm here with Latino Counseling. We have two offices here in Springfield, downtown Springfield, servicing the community, um, up to eight o'clock, providing outpatient services for the youth. And, um, actually, we have psychiatric services as well, including in Saturdays. So we are working very closely with the community.
Thank you, thank you so much. And something that I'd like to mention, I'm gonna let, um, Senator, um, I mean, Rep. Ramos introduce himself. But, um, is that we're meeting for six meetings. We've had, I want to say five, and, um, we're meeting for six meetings and doing all this work and all these meetings to come up with a plan for the city of Springfield to be able to respond to crises. And of course, like I said, we can't do it by ourselves. One agency can't do it, one person can't do it, and that's the reason we're collaborating. So I'm really excited to have the state legislatures here. Rep. Ramos, would you like to just say hi and, and welcome? And we want to welcome you.
Sorry, thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. Orlando Ramos, State Representative, I'm the ninth candidate district. I'm happy to be here with all of you. Just eager to learn how I can be helpful with this issue. I think that it was, uh, you know, the city council was on the right track in putting this, um, committee together, especially in the times that we're living in today and, and post-COVID. You know, mental health is gonna be a, a huge issue, and I'm glad that we're all realizing it. In fact, the state legislature, as you know, has taken action by passing a mental health bill, um, earlier in its session. So, um, you know, I'm just eager to learn how, how I can be helpful, and, um, I thank you all for the work that you do and the time and effort that you're putting into this, into this endeavor.
Thank you, thank you, Rep. Ramos. I would really love to hear about that mental health bill. Does anyone have any insight into it? See how, um, it's gonna affect the city of Springfield? Or do we have to read the hundred and sixty-seven pages?
I can send you some bullet points. I can send you a one-pager that, that sort of explains the bill, and you can share that with your committee members.
That would be very helpful, Representative. I would really appreciate that.
And I will tell you, part of it is about access, but also about, um, working to recruit more mental health professionals to the region, which we know there's an enormous shortage even just in, um, child and adolescent psychiatry, as well as, um, therapists. But also beds, we're looking at, uh, there's been almost no beds available. There's not one space to put anybody, and that's been really tragic and, and not the way to treat anybody. So there's a, a real concerted effort to try to work with, um, current hospitals and, uh, other facilities to find out what we can do to get dedicated beds.
Okay, that's amazing, that's great.
It's so needed.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to the, um, the one-pager that Representative Ramos is gonna graciously put together for us. I'd like for our providers to share with the state legislatures the barriers that you guys encounter. I can talk about what I've encountered in my private practice, but, um, you know, I, I'm really glad that they're trying to recruit, um, more providers. And there are a lot of providers out there. However, the dilemma is the reimbursement rates, right? That the insurance companies, you know, don't want to pay what they're supposed to be paying, in my opinion. Um, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let, um, the provider speak. If, if, would you like to, um, talk about that a little bit, Ben?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hi, and thank you, just nice to see so many folks from the delegation here with their ears listening to us. It's really appreciated, uh, for all of you, so thank you. And, you know, Jen, it's, you sort of almost stole my talking points, you know? It's really the issue here, our biggest pain point, and you know, we are the largest provider in the region, is just pure staffing, right? So that's, that's the pain right now, keeping programs open, um, keeping programs appropriately and safely staffed, being able to pay people competitive wages with the money that the state allocates for these crucial services like DYS, DCF, you know, severe mental health challenges. It's really, really a struggle right now, and I don't tend to go into historical language, but I have to tell you, at the leadership level at CHD, it's pretty much all we talk about right now. How can we provide services? And how can we staff programs when we are competing, you know? Unfortunately, and no knock on these big employers, but we are competing with the Amazon warehouse. We are competing with Target. We are competing with, you know, people that historically we have not had to compete with for staff, because there is such a crunch right now. Today, we had our bi-weekly leadership meeting, and we spent the entire two hours talking about staffing. So there is something that could help. In addition, you know, we really appreciate the Mental Health ABC Act, and we think there's so much in it that has the potential to make things better, to do, you know, what we're all intent on doing, which is not having providers complaining, but rather being able to provide more services to more people in our community, in all our communities. There are some good things in there. There's another good thing that has the potential to happen. There are monies in the Economic Development Bill that I know did not get over the finish line, and I understand the reasons for it. But there's a significant, um, there's a significant amount of resources in there that could really be used by providers to bolster the, the wages that they're able to pay people, particularly in DDS disability programs. And, you know, I know there's some things that need to play out with the excess money in the budget. I don't know if any of you would call it excess money, probably not, but I'm probably not supposed to say that. But I know, I know stuff has to play out there over the next few weeks, and I don't know what's gonna happen in informal session, but I think the Economic Development Bill certainly has some potential to help us in the provider space. And I see heads nodding, which I'm taking as a good sign. So I'll stop after that, and I hope that was helpful.
Thank you, thank you. Who, who wants to speak for the Latino Counseling Center?
Same here, just as Ben said, I mean, the show def is, is, is incredible. We, we, we struggle. Fortunately, we, we are trying to do a slow growth, so that has worked for us, you know? We, we continue to hire, but it's still, it continues to be a struggle to maintain programs like CBHI, going with mentoring, and, and, and the schools now that started and the needs that there are, especially in this community, uh, with the school starting. It, it, it is, it's incredible. And the reimbursement, like you said, Zeta, reimbursement, people want more for what they do. Mental health is not easy, the pressure, uh, working in mental health. It, it's not something that you cannot just not pay. You know, someone who went for masters and have student loans, and it's hard. It's, it's extremely hard as an employer to acquire somebody with an education and not be able to pay them for the type of work that they do and the amount of hours that they have to put in to do the work. It's, it's, it doesn't, doesn't. So it, it is a struggle. It definitely is.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Tiffany, do you want to talk about the youth mental health aspect of it? And, and what maybe the state legislatures might be able to support us on?
I'm sure, well, our, uh, coalition is really focusing on preventative, um, preventative methods, uh, to, to youth mental health. And, um, some of our strategies is through professional development and community education. And we're finding that, um, a lot of employers are looking for, um, or have access to training, but not necessarily, like a lot of folks have been talking about today, the funding to be able to pay the clinicians to be able to access and take the trainings that we have available for them. And so I think that would be an area is, you know, again, just providing additional funding so that they can, the clinicians can get, you know, culturally competent trainings and, um, things of that nature that would, that would make their jobs easier, or, uh, not easier, but, uh, easier to handle, I guess I would say. We're also doing a lot of work around mentoring, peer mentoring, and trying to really understand the land, understand the landscape of, um, near-peer mentoring in the Springfield area so that we can create more opportunities for youth to have access to trusted adults and, and peers that they can, they can speak to. In our research and conversations with youth, they really are seeking out those near-peer relationships and mentoring. And, um, yeah, I think that's, that's all I'll share for you.
Thank you. Um, and I don't want to make it, you know, sound like all we need is money. That would solve a lot of problems, maybe. But I think at the state level, I know that you all, you know, have the ability to pass budgets and stuff. But I think that somehow we need to find a way to address the insurance company issue, you know? And, and maybe next month, I'm gonna try to invite them. I don't know if they'll come. But you know, their, their reimbursement rates are ridiculous, you know, for the amount of work they do. Maria touched on it, as far as, you know, um, people come out of, of, uh, you know, college with a master's degree. They're gonna have eighty thousand dollars in student loans with interest accruing. We just saw the student loan forgiveness, um, thing that happened, which was not enough, in my opinion. But, you know, they come out, and then they're gonna get paid what they can make at McDonald's, you know? They'll, why don't they just go to work at McDonald's? Which is, nothing against McDonald's, but the same rate of pay for someone with a master's degree, um, is an issue. So at some point, I'd like to be able to figure out a way where we can, um, you know, coordinate or talk to the insurance companies about that part of it, you know? Because I think that would solve a lot of the problems, and we wouldn't have to depend on, you know, the state budgets to, to do all this work that's necessary. I'd, I'd like to hear from the community. Nicole, you wanna talk a little bit about what you think that the, uh, legislatures might be able to support us with? And how can, we can support them?
Um, I don't think that I have really much to add outside of what's already been contributed. I just really want to second a lot of what people are, are already saying, um, about both access to what we need. And I think as somebody who has accessed every service, every level of service, I've had every CBHI program. I've had every mental health treatment. I have DDS, I have DMH. So I've sought out state agency support in, in other things. And one observation that I make is that every time I turn around, I get told we don't have something available. And it's interesting, because I hear about how it's available over in Boston, and Worcester, and all these other areas. But I feel like I live in the wild, wild west where everything is forgotten. Um, as sadly as it is to say, I, I do agree, like, where Zeta's saying, I don't want to sound greedy, like, we're just saying, give us money, money, money. But a lot of it is resources, it is support, it is access to what we need. You know, finding extracurricular activities or funding to even do those types of things. Those are key in keeping a kid out of crisis, right? You're talking about a kid who's spending days in an ER, but we could have worked on getting their community needs met. And so I just really think that we need to put more focus into what Western Mass, what Western Mass is able to access over here in comparison to what other areas may have access to.
Thank you, Nicole. That's a very important point. Of course, Western Mass to Boston, there's a big divide. Jonathan, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
I would like to add that people, um, often they lose their medical insurance. Clients often lose their medical insurances. We have many clinicians, um, trying to do a work with their patients, uh, but at the same time, doing the documentation is a lot of work for them to, like, to, to find the time, um, to, to do the documentation. The medical insurance just gives us forty-five minutes, um, sixty minutes, um, no more than that. And, and they also are giving us twenty-four sections. So do our, we just have twenty-four section per year. Most of the time, we have also, uh, a lot of clients that they don't show up, they lose, like I, I says, um, lose their medical insurance. So it's very hard for a clinician to, to see, um, the behavioral health field as a, as a job, because they don't see, they cannot see the consistency in what they're doing. And when you cannot see the consistency in what you're doing, the cash flow, the productivity that you are expecting to do is, is hard to, for, for a clinician to, to, to keep doing what they're doing, because they, they could, they're, they're, it's hard for them to, to see that consistency. So yes, definitely, clinicians are struggling, and, and, and you can see many clinicians to go, go into other fields, like, uh, the colleague was mentioning, going to, to Target, Walmart, to other places, because they can see, they're seeing more consistency in other, in other fields.
Yeah, and people have to make a living, right? They have to pay their bills. So something I think that Nicole said, and Tiffany talked about prevention. Um, and the goal of this sixth meeting, uh, Mental Health Committee, is to find, figure out a way to prevent a crisis. And where we've talked about mental health checkups, I think having enough community resources, that definitely helps in preventing a crisis. You know, um, when a person, um, maybe goes in for a checkup, just an annual mental health checkup, we can, you know, maybe, um, cut some things off before they get worse. So we, that's what one of our goals is as well. So, um, at this time, is there anyone else that wants to share? Go ahead, Tiffany.
Yeah, I just, I just had one last thought. Some of the clinicians newer, new, with newer agencies on the coalition have shared, you know, that it's difficult to get mass health on their panels. And, um, you know, as we're talking about, uh, making sure that we have clinicians that our youth can identify with, right? That look like them and have cultural backgrounds like them. Most of our youth have mass health, and we have providers who are not able to get mass health on their panels. You know, that's a huge disadvantage to, to both the clinicians and the youth. So, uh, that, I would say that's another barrier. Um, and then just in general, you know, what are we doing to address some of the structures of racism, right? That are built into these systems, you know, that make it difficult for some of these things to occur? And, um, that's a huge barrier, because it's embedded in, in, in every piece of sort of the pie, the mental health pie, right? And everything. So, um, just wanted to verbally raise that and, and ask, you know, what are we doing to, to break down some of those systems?
Thank you so much, Tiffany. I second that wholeheartedly. Does, so anyone else have any comments? Or, uh, um, the legislature's offices, if you all want to, um, comment, ask us questions? Maybe there's some things that you guys, you know, might want to know about?
Well, if I, if I may, and I, I know this is my first meeting, and so I don't want to talk about stuff that's already been talked about, but I'll mention this. Have you talked at all about the new community behavioral health centers that are coming online early in the new year?
So actually, um, Kathy McHugh from BHN is going to be next month. She's gonna tell us about that. But if you have some insight, you can talk.
They're a provider, we're gonna be one of the providers in the region as well. And so I wanted to share a little bit of good news in terms of resources available. So those contracts were awarded, and they're gonna be coming online in the new year. So CHD is gonna be one of the big providers, and BHN as well, where Kathy, obviously, where I was from. But, um, mental health urgent care is a significant component of that. And, you know, obviously, the idea of urgent care, which has been a medical model for a long time, is enhancing access, right? And hopefully, using it appropriately. It's not a panacea, right? It doesn't solve all problems. And it certainly doesn't solve the problems, as I think Jen talked about, the absence of inpatient beds, right? So if you broaden the funnel, but the container doesn't get any bigger, you just have more people stuck in the funnel, right? And so I think that's kind of a concern with the mental health urgent care. But one of the big provisions of the CB, what we're called the CBHC, is a significant up, uh, upscaling of mental health urgent care services so people can get more rapid access as sort of a supplement to the crisis system. So, you know, I don't want to just bellyache. I want to say that there is some good stuff happening, and EOHHS has made some good decisions about how to improve the system of care. Now we just, you know, need to figure out these issues of wages, reimbursements, and obviously finding people to do these really, really life and death jobs.
Thank you, Ben, that's very important. Thank you so much for that. So I think, um, going back to the mental health checkup days, I'm wondering, um, how we can, um, figure out a way to, um, inform people about the opportunities for, like you said, um, Ben, the urgent care facilities, right? And then I know that primary care doctors are supposed to be doing kind of like a mental health checkup when you go in for your physical. An example I have to use myself is the last time, I hadn't had a physical through the pandemic, and I got one the other Then I got one the other, maybe last month, a month ago, and they did not ask me about my mental health. You know, so they're supposed to be doing it, but are they doing it? I know some of them do.
I have to comment because I have kind of a running gag with my PCP and I won't name names. I'm at the point with that thing where I'm saying, what do I have to write on it to get him to pay attention to it? How extreme do I have to get in terms of what I'm reporting? Because usually it's like, oh, yeah, okay, and then he erases it.
Yeah, yeah. So so we might be depending on them, on the primary care physicians to do that, but they're not doing it, you know. So are we, can we educate people about the urgent care? And can people go to urgent care to get a mental health checkup? I don't know. So that's something that we might want to work out. Jen, did you want to say something?
I did. I wanted to ask, do you think they're not following up because they don't have a place to refer you to? And they're just trying to stave off the inevitable? Or do you think there's just more of a stigma? And they don't feel like it's their expertise? I I don't, I'm.
Yeah, I don't know what that what that barrier is. There are some doctors who are going to use, ask about mental health. I know one doctor who's been in our community, loved it, beloved doctor. He must be like eighty, but he's still around. He refuses to integrate mental health and primary care. He refuses. But that's just one guy, you know. The one that I had, I think he was a PA, you know. And I don't know if they're telling them that they need to do it, you know. I'm I'm sure if I would have said something, he might have done it. I don't know. Next time I see him, I will ask him. Although you can't see the same person. Anyway, that's a whole nother problem. So I don't know. That's a good question, Jen.
I just wonder, well, and the pediatrician's offices that I've been involved with have have been doing at least a brief screening, having people fill it out on the form. But I did want to say too about the Economic Development Bill, just to go back to that. The Senator is a co-chair of that. And he's been working, obviously on his campaign, but obviously also on his actual job right now. And we're back in session starting, you know, today's September first, we're back in session this fall. And so he is talking with leadership about how can we do this because it didn't get done at the end of session. And even though we might not get the whole thing done, we want to take out pieces that would be important and critical to move forward and have them get to the governor's desk so that we can begin to push things into the twenty three, twenty four implementation stage. So it is a priority. I just want to assure people that he is working on that. We're in touch with a lot of the offices and trying to make sure we understand scheduling and what we have to do.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Cindy, Cindy, you had your hand up?
I did, just briefly to touch on the question about the PCPs doing the mental health checkup. I think, speaking as a nurse, a lot of it is just sort of that supply and demand. You know, you gotta get through the day, you gotta get through the paperwork, you gotta see the next patient. Also, the reimbursement, I mean, that's, we've been talking about that all night and it is, it's atrocious. And that creates a very cyclical thing that sends you almost in a rabbit hole, you know, where you try to see so many people so that you can earn a living. And so I think it's more that than they're just not, I would say not blatantly not being bothered, but just like they gotta move on, sort of thing. And and then, you know, yes, then it's the referral process and then it's yes, if you have the right insurance. And, you know, all of these sort of issues that need a safety net in mental, in the field of mental health. Because we know that, you know, their insurance or you get a notice from Mass Health, this is a time to renew. And it doesn't get done because they're they're already in a crisis that they've been in for a month already. You know, and then the insurance lapses. And I think that's a huge safety net, red flag right there. Because I think a lot of people lapse in their insurance because they're just in the middle of crisis and they're not paying attention. And, you know, they're, I don't want to say their workers need to, you know, social workers need to, you know, be on top. Like there's, you know, there's so much that maybe that's an implementation of some service that can be done, you know, and paid for through some funding to help with those services, making sure that those things are getting done. Because I see so many people slip through the cracks, literally because their insurance lapses, their mass health lapses.
Right, right. Yeah, thank you for that. Jonathan, you had your hand raised. I'm sorry, did you want to say something? And then Nicole had her hand raised. Go ahead, Nicole.
I won't take up too much time with this, but I'm just curious if part of the, what you were just saying with the implementation of that is, I do think that that comes down to maybe creating some legislation around what the PCPs should be doing in the office. And maybe it does require them creating a role to do that. Because I have found that they're working on doing that in most pediatrician offices where they are contracting with agencies like BHN and CHD and other places where they bring a behavioral intervention person into the office and that person strictly screens out mental health. And they make referrals. I personally had a coordinator that was like, okay, so this is what's going on. And we're gonna call all these people. They made all the referrals. They did everything. So there there is that role, that person, but I find that it's lacking in the adult health field. It's very much prevalent within the pediatric and youth field, but it gets forgotten in the adult field. It's almost like people who are eighteen to about sixty don't go through crises. And then when you become a senior, all of a sudden, mental health matters again. So I think it does come down to creating some legislation of doing some sort of implementation of all people, all ages. That's all.
Good. Thank you so much, Nicole. That's absolutely right. And I'm glad that it's happening at the pediatrician offices, though. That's excellent. And hopefully with the Youth Mental Health Coalition, you guys can keep an eye on that. All right, excellent. So yes, anyone else? Just so you all know, this is an election year, I guess every year is, and all elections matter. And I know that Senator Lesser is running for Lieutenant Governor. Rep Popolo is running again. He's he's unopposed, correct, Sherry? Okay, and Rep Ramos is also unopposed, but of course they'll be on the ballot. So if you see them on the ballot, you see by their presence here, their representative's presence here, I, you see that mental health is important to them. So we need to get them back in or in. Sherry? Did you want to say something?
Oh, I know. I realized when I said, I responded before that I was muted, so.
You were muted, yes.
I does, I opened up just just in case there was something else. I apologize for that.
No, no worries, no worries. All right, great. So I think this has been really good. Like I said, at the end of our six meetings, we're going to be putting a report together. And of course, we'll have be having the input of the state legislatures, which I'm, which I'm really, really happy about. Next month is our last meeting. I can't, I can't forget if we met in May, so May, June, July, August, September. Yeah, October will be our last meeting. And maybe we'll get the health insurance companies to come out and see if they can hear our concerns and maybe we can hear their concern. Maybe they have some concerns that they want to share with us. We'll see what happens. Because, you know, I don't know if they like to come out too much. All right, there are there any other questions or concerns that we want to share tonight? Excellent. Well, I want to thank you all so much for coming out. This is a group effort. I'm so excited for the collaboration that is happening in the city of Springfield right now regarding mental health. The Youth Mental Health Coalition, all the agencies that are representative, represented in the Mental Health Subcommittee. I think it's vital that we stick together, that we work together and that we just continue moving forward. You know, the whole state, we need to work together and have Boston, you know, pay attention to Western Mass. So this is how we're gonna do it by making some noise. All right. Well, you all have a good night. Thank you so much for coming out.